Would everyone join as we pause to give thanks to our Creator for this opportunity to deliberate the issues that have come before this county and for the freedom that we have to vote the will of the citizens for the good of the people. May we never forget the freedom that we have and from whence it comes, our Heavenly Father. Amen.
Good Lord, we are the United States of America, and we deliver the love of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good say everyone here. Yeah, I just want to make sure. Yeah, we're just in time for Mark. You're right on time, Mark, we done a road call. Eighteen present, and I did get a call from Mr. Oxford, and he will be here. We'll wait till we get here to plug him in. Okay. Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. All right. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the previous meeting? I don't need any. So, um, entertain a motion?
Move big seven.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, let's vote quick. All right, let's have a count, please. So you're, yes. All right. All right, Ken, you ready?
Resolution two thousand twelve fourteen, resolution in honor and recognition of Robert Dodson deceased for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Robert Dodson earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as chairman of the Coffee County Public Building Authority for eight years, whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Mr. Roger Dodson for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Roger, Mr. Roger Dodson receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record. Passed and so ordered this twelfth day of June, two thousand twelve.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this resolution. Mr. Lou, do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Eighteen, okay. Miss Patton, we'll give them time to type in the next page. People see the votes here. We're trying to slow down just a little bit so people can see the votes.
Resolution two thousand twelve fifteen, resolution in honor and recognition of Charles Edward Jones deceased for his devotee devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Charles Edward Jones earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as sergeant for the Coffee County Sheriff's Department for twenty-three years and a member of the Coffee County Honor Guard Unit, whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Mr. Charles Edward Jones for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Mr. Charles Edward Jones receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as permanent record. Passed and so ordered this twelfth day of June, two thousand twelve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Resolution two thousand, two thousand twelve sixteen, resolution in honor and recognition of Don Northcutt deceased for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Don Northcutt earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as Coffee County Commissioner for twenty years and a well-known artist, especially the historical drawings of Coffee County and surrounding counties. Mr. Northcutt was also a T double S double A official for twenty years, whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Mr. Don Northcutt for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Mr. Don Northcutt receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record. Passed and so ordered this twelfth day of June, two thousand twelve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Congress, Penny L. Barnes, Beverly J. Capps, Cecilia Craig, Charlotte M. Hopkins Graves, Amy E. Jackson, Rolando Nunez, Devin Allen Teesier, Sharon K. Waller, Blake Wybert, Robert T. Carter, Gay S. Phelps, Barbara Johnson, Kristy D. Jones, and Melissa Wilson.
Ken, entertain a motion?
No.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? If not, let's vote, please. No, library.
Patricia Graves and Jerry Sparling.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? If not...
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned Deanna Lawson.
Yes, and, yeah, that's what we're looking at. Yeah, so, that's why, the letter that we got was the library board. And I thought it was the Deanna Lawson too, but according to the letter... So, library board, Ms. Sparling? Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. Oh, wait, no, okay. Is it not working? There we go. All right, now, let's have a count.
Okay, sanitation.
Okay, yes, on sanitation board?
Yes.
Tim Morris is gonna take lead, I mean, same in the various places. If we could get a motion to accept...
No.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Question.
Question been called, let's vote.
Okay, Water Waste Water Treatment Authority will be John Hall and Lee Duckett.
I'll entertain a motion to accept them. All right, do we have a second? Question been called, let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Nineteen, yes, okay.
I don't have anything under oath.
Okay. All right, out of nine, reports county officials standing in special duty.
Jail reading.
Tim Morris?
Okay. Our budget came back on the jail with bail construction at nineteen million five hundred thousand dollars. That's pretty good right now, the way the economy's doing, there's a lot of people that are wanting to go to work. The holdup right now is, we're under a, like a hole right now because of an Indiana bat. It's an endangered species that could be living, have a habitat in that area. They've come in and identified seventy trees in the area that we won't build our jail. One option is to move the jail, and that's not an option because we placed that jail where there's no wetlands for expansion and for farming lots. So, the option of moving the jail to the front of the lot, there's just no option. We met last night with a consultant, his name is Steve Wong, and we picked in okay last night to speak with US Wildlife Resource people and to see if we can mitigate these trees by buying them. We won't be able to do anything with the trees until July the fifteenth. The bats are born first week of June, takes thirty days for them to be able to fly. So, he's gonna speak with them about doing that, and we worked on that last night, and that seems to be the cheapest option. An option is to have him go out and do a sound study and then put nets up, track the bats, and then we pay the money to cut the trees down again. So, I feel like that what we did last night was a pretty good thing to try to save some money. So, if anybody else wants to jump in there, it's on the jail too, so...
Yeah, or if any of the other commissioners has any questions.
They don't know if the bats were even there?
The potential, AEDC has a large area of them out there, and with that being, undisturbed land for several years and the seventy trees, the female bat can live back in behind pill bark. If there is one, one bat, we have to do the mitigation. The studies, if we do the sound study and the nets, it's gonna cost somewhere between twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, just to find out if they're there. Any other question?
Is it not available, does it not yet work?
It is. Yes, I am. They're, they're only endangered species. TWRA is working with it right now. If we do mitigate the trees, the money has to come from the state of Kentucky, it does not state in Tennessee.
It goes with the preservation of that particular bat.
It goes with the preservation of that particular bat. It is only endangered species, listen.
Is there no visible way to know that they're there? Or somebody could inspect the trees or...
Well, the trapping, they would, they would ask you to do the nets, and then they, if there is a bat there, they have to have radio transmitters put on, and he spends like a week out there tracking these bats, and if they fly to the trees, then we're right back where we are right now.
Okay, once again, how big is the area that, you know, where they're suspected of being?
Seventy trees in the footprint of the jail.
Seventy trees. And couldn't somebody inspect those seventy trees, I mean?
Then you'd disturb it, you'd have a bad experience.
We, there's some pretty, we talked about, yeah, that, that...
It's probably stuff, I mean...
I don't know where it came from, Ms. Patton, it's just something that, this is part of the USDA loan that we're trying to get, that would save the county quite a bit of money on interest rates for the life, the life of the jail. And we talked about last night going away from that, and now that this has been brought up, I mean, we're gonna have to deal with this issue one way or the other, you're not gonna be able to just leave USDA loan program and go to bonds and go out there and knock the trees down.
No, I just wondered if it was somebody from USDA that came out there and looked, or how, how you...
I think it's just part of the checklist that's coming through the low interest lines, they have procedures and criteria that we have to make, and that's just one of them to check with.
It just seems like somebody could hand inspect those seventy trees, I mean, in a day or two and find out whether they're there or not. I mean, that just makes too much sense, I guess. Check if those are dead and dying trees, it'd be easy to identify if you wanna go out there.
It has to be done in five hours, you're at five.
They could be disturbing their habitat if they do that.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars, is this to buy?
Um, the...
Try to use a little different word.
Negotiated price will be for the removal of the trees after July the fifteenth, that's the earliest that we're looking at that we can do, and what we're trying to do is not put bail out there in late November. If he can start moving dirt and could do the undercut and get it done before wet season gets in, then he can really start construction on the jail. If we get, keep getting pushed back, we're gonna get pushed through the ninety-day lock-in window on the, on the jail beds, we could potentially not start the jail until spring of next year.
So, it's in a favor to do this donation?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not been done yet, I mean, he's...
But she's asking, is it...
To me, it is. Potentially, if, if the cost of construction goes up, it could go astronomical. I mean, it's just, if people go back to work and they're not as hungry as they are right now wanting to build our jail, the bid could go up.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Patton?
Anyone have anything else? Why does he say that?
Okay, let's, let's get a motion to accept a community report, get a second, let's just go ahead and vote that report in. I haven't got a motion, I haven't got a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Well, let's vote, please. All right, before we start, the attorney wants to say something.
There are two motions that relate to the zoning resolution, they're going to be addressed, we've had a public hearing on earlier this evening. We will allow the attorney or representative of the opponents of the change five minutes to speak before the resolutions are offered, and we'll rely, we'll allow an attorney or representative of the opponents to speak five minutes, after which the resolutions will individually be submitted and discussed by the commissioners and voted upon. But although they'll, the commissioners will address them individually, during your five minutes on each side, go ahead and address both resolutions, so it'd just be one speed time for each side. So, opponent of the resolution, two thousand twelve hyphen ten, two thousand twelve hyphen eleven, come forward.
Okay, and attorney is timing.
Good evening, my name is Josh McCreary, Attorney at Coles, Attorney McCreary in Mercury's Borough, and here on behalf of the, of the applicant. Thank you for letting me speak. Earlier at the public hearing, I speak again now briefly, I'll, I'll restate to some extent what I suggested to you at the, at the public hearing earlier today, that is, that we believe there's some real legal issues for this body to consider as you consider these resolutions, and they are these. The first issue is that there could be some real legal problems with the zoning out and use altogether within the county. What I mean by that is this, we understand, or I understand, on the current zoning resolution, that the M-two zone has to be located within the urban growth boundary, and at the same time, there's a requirement that those zones be located away from residential developments and community facilities. And what I will submit to you is that the locations within the urban growth boundary, where there would not be residential developments or community facilities, are fewer and far between and perhaps nonexistent altogether. And if that is true, then there really is no practical way to locate an M-two zone within the urban growth boundary. And there are certain uses that I understand are only permitted within the M-two zone. So, all of that being true, then there may be uses that there really nowhere you can locate them. And there are cases out there that suggest that if you have a use that is otherwise lawful, such as quarrying, is the, is the issue that was addressed earlier tonight, it is, it is really not appropriate to create a zoning resolution that in effect, in practice and application, means there's really nowhere you can look for, because you've zoned out a use that is otherwise a lawful use. So, I submit to you that the resolution is intended to rectify that situation by simply allowing and removing the requirement that it be located within the urban growth boundary, and that opens the possibility of finding locations that will not be located inappropriately near to residential developments and community facilities. near to residential developments and community facilities. The second issue is similar and relates to the other resolution, and that has to do with reclamation bond. And really, that resolution only has the effect of reducing the amount of the reclamation bond. And in a similar way, if the amount of the bond is, is so high that in practice, an applicant could not meet that bond obligation, then really, you're, you've got the same effect by your zoning resolution that you have, that I just talked about. That is, there's no real way for an applicant to actually meet your M2 zoning requirements because they can't meet the bond requirements. And so, again, our position is that that would be inappropriate, and so these resolutions simply, simply rectify that. There was some discussion earlier at the public hearing about spot zoning. Keep in mind, you're not rezoning property tonight. This is not an application to rezone a piece of property. For that reason alone, you cannot be engaging in illegal spot zoning, not tonight, because you're not rezoning anything. You're just simply amending your zoning resolution. But it wouldn't be spot zoning anyway, because spot zoning by definition means that you're zoning a piece of property in a way that is not harmonious with the other properties, but also, and this is important, that is not harmonious with your zoning resolution. If this amendment to the zoning resolution is adopted, then obviously, subsequent zoning requests or rezoning requests to the M2 zone would be in harmony with your zoning resolution. That's the whole point of the resolution, is to try to make all the provisions within your resolution harmonious and not conflicting as they are now. A fourth issue to consider is that, as a body, and I don't, I don't envy your job, I know it's a difficult job, but, and there are lots of things to consider and lots of considerations, but what a, what a body like this is not to do is to, is to act arbitrarily or preciously, and those are good legal words, but as a practical matter, that just means you've got to rely on real information that really is in front of you on issues that really do have to be voted on. And here, if we get into this idea of whether or not quarry is popular or not, or the applicant's popular or not, or we like the idea of it, or are those kinds of issues, or even whether or not it's spot zoning in the future? When spot zoning's not in front of you, I would submit to you that would be acting arbitrarily and preciously and inappropriate for this body. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. McQuerry. Mr. Cunyan?
I noticed that the first thing Mr. McQuerry did was mention applicant. As far as last Thursday goes, there's been no application to your planning commission for anything. And it appears to me that we're kind of getting cart before the horse. We're kind of doing some work where the burden of proof should be on them and, and not on us. They are not zoned out. There is a place for them suggested by state advisors and planning commission. That is in the UGV. He, they keep talking about the UGV and it being residential. It's not just residential. It's commercial and industrial. Your industrial park is there. That is where the M2 is put, simply because you try to put businesses and usages of the same characteristics in the same location. And that's what we have now. If you start moving high-impact usages out into the rural areas where there's not as much safety, not as much fire protection, not as good services, basically, most of the time, not as good roads. You're starting to amend the growth plan that was voted on by the Proposition 11-1 Committee, which, there's a whole big procedure to amend that growth plan, and it's beyond this commission and it's beyond the planning commission. The rights knew what this property was owned or when it was bought. The counties done them no harm. They done them no harm at all. If you allow an M2, and this is not just considering walk, rock parties, there are a lot of other high-impact uses of the land that can go into an M2 zone. Yes, the planning commission has the ability to suggest, you guys have the ability to pass, but that's kind of up in the air too, if you go back to Proposition 11-1, because it basically gives the county planning commission and the county commission basically the right only to make low-impact type decisions. The whole resolution basically is, is, is kind of ill-conceived from the, from a partial definition on down. There's no need to move an M1 or an M2. On the second proposition, or the second resolution, excuse me. I think that, that they're probably correct in the fact that I did go back into the amendments, and this thing was amended in 2003. However, after talking to some officials today, I have, I've talked to TDEC guy that deals in reclamation in particular, I have his name and phone number for anyone that would want it after the meeting. The best thing to do would be to send this resolution back to the planning commission. Let them study it and come up with a fair amount of bond that would protect the interest of citizens of copper county. Their, that's what their job is, and you should let them do it. This should never go around with the planning commission. When you have a solid majority vote of the planning commission, that decision should stand. If it was a close vote, with the chairman maybe voting to break the tie, I could see ringing for the full commission, but I think that was a mistake. The planning commission is there for a reason, and we should use them. But let them make, let them write a resolution to take the place of this one, get the, get dollar amounts that, that experts in the field will give you, and then come back and vote the commission and vote on the thing. Now, thank you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cunyan.
Resolution 2012-10, a resolution amending provisions, Article 5, Section 40047, a zoning resolution, resolution 2006, and a community of the county.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, so we get into discussion. We have a motion. Now, let's get into the discussion.
This chairman, is, is the chairman of the zoning commission?
Of, of the zoning commission or the planning?
I mean, the planning.
Um, is the chairman, I have not seen her here. She is not here. Well, we do have, that's the only member, are you the only member here with the planning commission?
Wait, now, Mr.?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Tim Morris, and, yeah, Mr. Anderson, okay, so we've got a four, we don't have the chairman here.
I'm just wondering, has the planning commission actually, has this particular issue come up and voted on at the planning commission?
Uh, would you like for him to come up to the podium? And then you, you've got the other three members here, or four altogether. Come on up. Yeah. That's Mr. Cordell, you know, he spoke earlier. Okay. Commissioner Brickin just lets you know, he's already spoken once as the planning commissioner. Any questions, sir?
Is this particular issue about the reclamation bond come before the planning commission and it acted on day or not?
Yes, we did review this. And we've discussed that many times. That's true.
I was just saying, the issue about, that this particular issue probably has some merit, just might be the dollar amount, but the $2,000 may be the appropriate amount or not. If y'all discussed it and got any information, because it does seem like, I understand, the current part of the zoning policy has $95,000 an acre?
That's correct.
Which does seem-
Too low.
Yeah. So, you know, whether we have to sit there and comment, the idea about sending it back to y'all makes some sense, but if y'all already debated it and came to some conclusion, maybe it belonged to the courts.
We have not talked with TDEC officials or whomever as to what the current cost of reclamation would be over landfill or whatever. And, you know, perhaps we may, we, no doubt, could figure somewhere between that. But yes, we have, we've discussed these generalities, but not actually approaching professionals as to what the, what the cost should be today for that. What, what term we did have is, whatever you set today, what may have been in two years, five years, whatever, but that's a floating figure, I'm not going to determine.
I've got extra questions, but we have not discussed it.
Let's assume it passes tonight, y'all go back and decide that 2,000 is inappropriate. It doesn't mean that y'all couldn't come back for this body and say it needs to be five thousand.
That's true.
So.
Commissioner? Let me ask you a question. The vote here is not to undermine the planning commission, it's to clarify what's going on, and this is not an in and around. The question I've got is, some of these block quarries and other things that have been abandoned, that did not have this bond to go with, have been left abandoned and are knocked in the public interest. Is there a way that the public, the planning commission can require that this be reclaimed as a go, the amount, 123 acres, 200 acres of the rock? Don't wait 50 to 100 years, whatever it is, to then reclaim it, reclaim it as a go, and get it back, and that would reduce that aggregate amount, and then the cost as a go should not be as much. If we're not telling the planning commission what to do, is that an alternative that you have, so the aggregate cost would be less?
Yes, we can review that and, you know, with something to go. And some are discussing, we were concerned about what if, and, you know, you can't cross some bridges for you too, but we were, we had some concern as to what if anyone walked off from a business in a situation like this, three years down the road, or five years down the road, without a property, a property to claim. And, you know, we're not professionals in that regard, and we're not geologists, we're not engineers. We can, if you wanted to, we can research that and keep that to determine what could be a progress from that one. One concern was, had was that if they were to walk off or similar situation happened, what impact would this have on the taxpayers of this town, three, five, 10 years down the road, if one of them passing down to a children in their mansion? Time of that, yes, we have not examined that to that point, seeing what professionals say, is a valid cost of that before this type of resolution.
Commissioner West?
Commissioner Brickin, back prior to 2006, this very resolution was passed by the zoning board unanimously. It was passed before this body, was passed, I think, 20 to 1 or something like that, somebody was stating, I don't remember exactly, but vast majority. And subsequently after that, the zoning board presented the whole book to be passed, and that part was left out. So what we're doing is going back, trying to put that back in like it should have been in the 2006 resolution, or 2006-39 resolution, to put it back where it was, and that changes it after that, sure. But all this is doing is going back and trying to put it back like it was originally, and then we go from there.
All right, Commissioner Jones, and then Commissioner Bradford.
I guess my question's for Mr. West or Ms. Fann. How did we come to the term of the $2,000 figure?
It was originally in the original planning documents that came down from wherever they came from when we first adopted. Sometime thereafter, and we think Mr. Kip Green, is that my truth so far, Mr. Kip Green changed that to, well, the change that left out, the $2,000, left the $95,000, and made it look like it's just $95,000 total, which would be millions and millions and millions of dollars to reclaim. Now, they're not, they're not talking about refilling a hole out there, you're talking about reclaiming the areas where the concrete, there's piles of gravel, something like that, they push all this dirt back, make burns out of it, they go on about their business, and when they're done, they bring it back in, it's reseeded, and it looks like farming.
Okay, Commissioner Bradford?
Okay, this, this resolution is not brought here in front of us tonight by the planning commission.
No.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct, okay. So the planning commission is not bringing this resolution, this resolution is brought to us by, by two commissioners, okay. My next question is, currently, is it $95,000 an acre or up to $95,000 an acre? $95,000, all right. All right, the $2,000 is just way, way, way off. Anybody that's ever done any kind of construction work, or had any kind of work done at all, or deal, deals with dirt, or hauling dirt, or construction around a house, or whatever, it's $2,000, you spend $2,000 completely easy, so that figure alone is way off. I think with listening to Mr. Cordell, and if the planning commission is acceptable as it is, and if, apparently, I think what I'm hearing, that we're, we're just kind of debating on price tags here of where it needs to be, I think it's just, send it back to the planning commission, let them review the whole thing, come up with a price tag where it needs to fall, and certainly, I do agree with his statement, you know, if you set it at a certain figure like $5,000, well, 10 years from now, that $5,000 is going to be too low. So it's got to be something between a range. And, but that's something for them to look at and, and talk to engineers and state people. And earlier, I forgot now which lady it was, and it might have been Mrs. Gillett, that talked about a bond, it may not be a way to go. It may be a certificate, I don't remember the exact words you used, a chat on the bank or some kind of certificate or deposit, and I don't want to get into that.
Like a credit cashier's check or a line of credit?
Right. So that's something else, and, and Mr. Cordell was here, and that's something else that they can look into. I'd like to table this and send it back to the planning commission.
Are you making that as a motion?
Yes, I am.
Table it in and refer it to committee are two different things. You can, you can table it, and then it's on the table till somebody takes it off the table. Or you can refer it to a committee specified in the motion, a period of time when that committee report back, but it would actually be one of those two items.
First of all, you're going to withdraw your motion to the table? I'm going to withdraw my motion. I would like to refer this back to the planning commission for study, in a timeframe of three months.
And that is a motion, that you want my back? All right, can we get a second?
Mr. Bradford, would you also entertain that you asked him to set a reclamation amount, and also the method by which that reclamation amount will be guaranteed to taxpayers of copper county? I will.
Okay. All right. Can we get a second on that? On this motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Discussion?
The planning commission makes once a month, and we need two free meetings to work on this.
Commissioner Bryan, you, you was going to say something, did you have something to say?
Well, you know, I had a few comments, and I would oppose the resolution as it is. And I think Mr. Bradford's motion is a good motion, because, you know, we respect the planning commission, and they're fighting to take vote on this. And I respect him for voting unfavorable, because this resolution doesn't represent the best interest of taxpayers of Coffe County. Obviously, the two thousand amount is way too low. I respect the fact that we don't want to be capricious toward the taxpayers of Coffe County, as attorney said, but also, we want to make an amount as fair to the applicants that they can meet these requirements. And I think there should be a irrevocable line of credit, and a strong guarantee to taxpayers of county. And we need a fair amount, because we're here to represent the taxpayers, and also a private entity, and we want to be fair in both directions.
I would like to say, I agree...
Ms. Van, could you, could you select a recording?
I agree that the two thousand is low. I also agree that the ninety-five thousand is too high. I do agree that there needs to be a span in there. But why, if Mr. Cordell thinks the ninety-five thousand is so high, why was it put in there to begin with? Why was that figure, where did you arrive at that figure? Because it's a span between two thousand dollars and ninety-five thousand dollars, and I think they're both wrong figures.
Commissioner Kelly?
I guess, Bobby, I wouldn't be jumping to the conclusion about your revocable letters of credit. When we're talking about an earth movement, an destruction kind of environment, and that's typically handled by performance bonds or other kind of bonding, and you're fabricating, making it impossible for anybody to come up with that kind of approach when it's not the norm, and you're asking to invent something that doesn't exist. I don't know if the two thousand dollars is a good figure or a bad figure. I do know that part of the country from which I come, they're reclaiming all of the strip mines, and building those in, and putting dirt over the top of them, and replanting them. They do have other restrictions on it, it has to be done in the original paragraph, so you can't use it for anything else for the rest of its life. But the, the point being, they're doing that for not much more than two thousand dollars an acre in reclaiming those. So I don't know what's a good number. I certainly know that we ought to consider getting back to what we approved originally, which is the resolution that's been brought back before us, to take us back to where we, what we had on the books before somebody made an error, or a change, or however it occurred. But it wasn't what was approved by this commission, and that's what ended up being in the book that got approved after we approved the resolutions. I think we ought to go back and pick up the resolution, I think it ought to go to the planning commission, I think they ought to change it. I think they ought to have a practice whereby they review their fees on a periodic basis, and bring those up for changes, because I'm not interested in figuring out how I'm going to pay for something twenty-five years from now. I want to know what the cost is now, as we start this process, and then how we escalate that over a period of time, to give the guy a fair chance at putting back the right amount of money, so that we do bring the land back to the big state.
All right, any other discussion? Does everyone understand the motion?
After ninety days, it automatically has to come back to this body?
Is that your motion, after ninety days, it comes back to this body? That was the time limit, right, ninety days?
It'll come back with some kind of reclamation, I don't know what that reclamation would be.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? It's not disvocal, please. Okay, I, I ask that, we're already voting, can you say the motion? Yes, this man, to refer it to the planning commission. All right, let's have a count, please. Okay, Ms. Van?
Resolution two thousand and twelve eleven, a resolution made in provisions of Articles Five, Section four thousand forty-seven, and the zoning resolution, Resolution two thousand and six thirty-nine, estimated at public county to the state.
It's not, it's Article Four, not Five, and I'll entertain a motion to accept it that way. So, thank you, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Patton, do you know what we're talking about?
I know you do.
Okay, all right, I just need to look up here, too many patents here, right? Let's get into the discussion.
I've got a question I'd like to ask you.
Okay.
If we could ask somebody from the planning commission to come back up, I guess one of the things I'm...
Mr. Cordell?
I'm interested in, I'll wait for him to get here and ask it. And I don't know if he were on the commission at the time or not, but I guess I'm interested in, when we put in this, the original language, that this is going to be changed now. And we said it has to be in the urban growth boundary and away from residential. Do we actually have rock in the county that will meet that? Or is this one of those things that there's no place around that actually meets that requirement?
I have no idea, I was up there when that language was put in there, whenever.
Okay, I appreciate that. I don't know for certain, I did take a look at, at the maps and the geological stuff, and it appears to me that we don't have any qualifying land that could serve outside of the grandfathered area, and the surrounding area there, that, as I understand, that that group that's in operating has already acquired that land and continued, and will actually, over time, ring the piece of property we're talking about. So, I, I was just curious if that was actually part of the planning, or if it was just a, a means to get an issue off the table.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, on this resolution, two thousand and twelve, allowing a single rock. You know, there's a lot inaccuracies in the resolution. We got a situation that somewhat parallels the other resolution, is that a number of things in this resolution may be corrected, and looked at, and studied, to try to deal with this matter that the resolution addresses. And I feel that this resolution likewise should be referred back to the planning commission, and let them study and review this resolution, and what the purpose and intent of this resolution is. And obviously, like I said, there's a lot of discrepancies in this, and a lot of things that are inaccurate in the resolution, so I don't think we'd be prudent in adopting this resolution in format that is here, because it could be implying things well beyond what we might intend. So I think this resolution likewise needs to be studied much further by the planning commission.
Okay, do you want to have a time limit on that, Mr. Bryan?
Well, once again, the planning commission generally makes once a month. I don't know what, with the other task that's been given to them, how long they feel they might need. We have, what, four or five members here, or seven?
Yes, we do, and more. Would any of the planning commission members like to comment on that, about the timeframe?
I don't really know how, how much time it would take, you know, to work most of these, and we're going to be dealing with the other one first. But I think the planning commission needs adequate time to study this, and, because it's going to... Any changes that we make in the zoning, it's going to impact this county wide, and we have to take that into consideration. If we were to pass this, the way it is, it will impact this county wide, not just the area that they're wanting to impact right now. So that's something that needs considerable study, in my opinion. I, I would want some time there, I don't know, what would be an adequate time, but probably more than the three minutes that we're working on the other issue. We could work both of them currently, but I think the planning commission is not a full-time job. We're there, and I don't believe we're even getting paid for it, for that matter, but that's a Poseidon point. But anyway, we'd be, we'd be working with experts in the field, and trying to come to some conclusion, because this, this will impact the whole, whole zoning authority.
Mr. Cordell, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson, I didn't see you slid right up there.
I lost my understanding, and I'd like to clarify, the panel, I served as chairman of the Level One Committee, has tapped this resolution in the past, and it definitely wasn't in there that the, the Rock Court or something like that, it had to be within the urban growth boundaries. We didn't approve that, and we did not approve, it had to be under five thousand dollars, because we didn't get it. And I, I'm not sure what the, what the law, if there's an idea, five thousand dollars, the county now changed, I don't know. With, with the time, whether it was Ron Cooper, or the, for a while there, we didn't have anybody, get the girl in the office, play the radio. I think, maybe that mattered in the town, when that would be copied, when that would be copied, somehow or another, the, the, that resolution, that had been earlier, when we put that in, when, that we definitely did not, we definitely did not prove the resolution, which is something such as a Rock Court has to be within urban growth boundaries, which is outrageous, I mean, that's what you said, that, that, that makes sense. So, and there's several of them, you say, that is, something that sort of has to go with the urban growth boundaries, yet can't go anywhere, it gets off that area, and to, to tell them what was out of their mouth, in that, in that district. I voted, not being like the boys, to change it up, on that last, we, I got out of it. But anyway, I, I feel like, either we are, the whole town commission, owes the public of Coffe County, to do something like that, straight up, just something unreasonable, and then by coming to Coffe County, to put it for establishment, to enable it to get, see that type of resolution, and then help it move to Coffe County, and then the decision presented, so it's going in there, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordell, you mind coming to the podium just a minute? Question was, involved the four planning commission people that's here, do you have in mind a timeframe?
Back to what Mr. Ducker said with being, you know, we could well have some special call meetings, we may want to do that. We hate to prolong the issue, but it's just not fair to my family or anyone else, but, you know, we, I'm agreeing with having special meetings to be able to do that. I would suggest maybe tack it on another month, and maybe ninety days on the first resolution, and then make the four months on the second. No, now one additional one. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Patton, did you, like Commissioner Patton and Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I do not see how that we can say no to the Rock family, because Rogers Group is grandfathered in, and nobody seems to be worried about how much it's due today, we don't have to pay for an acre. And they're right across the finish, I'm not talking about three, four miles down the road, they're across the finish. So that just seems, it doesn't seem right to me.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly, and back to Commissioner Van.
Now, first, second, what I said, you know, one of my concerns is, at the county level, at some point, the way the resolution sets today, we're going to have to change the resolution to ever get another quarry. Except the one that's been grandfathered in, because there's no land that I find that meets that criteria that would permit someone to come in and start a quarry. And I think that's, you know, an error that was made, and Mr. Anderson related to that, that was not the intent at the time. I guess, Bobby, I got a question for you, you talked about a lot of inaccuracies and errors and stuff. I've read through this, and I guess I don't see those things, so I'd like for you to point them out to me.
Well, one thing in the were asked section, I guess, forward and down, the definition on UGV is, you know, far broader than that. I don't have all the document here in front of me to read it off, but we have a person here who was a member of the coordinating committee, and he could address this, and of course, Mr. Cordell, he probably did expect to be up here addressing some of these things neither. But Steve Cunningham, I believe, is still here, and he was a member of the Level One Coordinating Committee, is he still here?
Yes, Mr. Cunningham, do you mind coming to the podium?
I think I said yes, so I don't have to come up anymore.
Well, we got the sheriff here.
And, Mr. Kelly, I asked him your question.
Yes, thank you, York.
Maybe I'm not.
Question?
I, I should... I think it was really Bobby's question, he was asking on the urban growth boundary, what the final definition was as opposed to...
According to Proposition Level One, the urban growth boundary, and it's also in portion, it's also in our zoning resolution. The urban growth boundary is, I'll have a hard time reading this. It is a reasonably compact area that contains corporate limits of the municipality and the adjoining territory where high-density commercial, industrial, and residential growth is expected. If you were to read this resolution and you listen to the other side, they would have you believe that it's mostly residential. It's not mostly residential, you live in Tallahassee, you know that there are different zones for industrial and commercial use. If I could go so far as to answer your other question, there's rock everywhere if you go deep enough. And they are doing that in a lot of places, because there's not as much reclamation to be had, after that. So, when you start calling that digging in the side of the mountain, there is more reclamation. Will you, you mentioned strip lands, a lot of those, you have a lot of them. Any other questions?
Well, if you don't mind, just, just for a minute, just to make sure that... Okay, we got Ms. Van, Mr. Alford, and Commissioner West, did you have something?
I would just like to say that I lived in Hillsborough for thirty-six years, that is not as long as a lot of you all have lived there. I would never do anything to hurt the scenery or anything in Hillsborough. I have been back there where they think about looking at that Rock Court. And I find that there, I have all trust that it's going to be really nice. But what bothers me is, and I talked to the lawyer about this, our county lawyer, is that when the other lawyer got apparent, says that there's supposed to be public hearings on these changes in the zoning and stuff. You know, I never got a letter on any public hearings on any zoning changes in the... hearings on any zoning changes since I've been a commissioner, except for this one that was on the one to nine. So I, what I am curious about is, if there have been public hearings on these changes that were supposed to have had, that weren't had, and if they weren't had and were supposed to have hearings, then did some of these changes start as illegal to begin with?
Commissioner Alford? Any commissioners?
Just answer my question.
Okay. Commissioner West?
This motion, or this resolution, was tabled three years ago by this planning committee, they didn't do anything with it then. This is not something new that's come up. This has been in here for six, seven, eight, nine years. Well, how long did it take them to do a study on it? The meetings I went to, they just said, well, it's bad, they were going against it, that's it.
Any other comments?
There's not any.
Yeah, I mean. No, Mr. Patton, did you, no, she didn't ask that.
I was going to speak, you see, I don't want to get settled.
All right. One step. Commissioner Ryan, Virgil, uh, Virgil Alford, and Commissioner Anderson, question on the resolution?
They don't ask further questions, or you may seem to try and cut off a discussion.
No one's doing anything, so it's called their own.
Do you want to withdraw? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, could he?
Yeah.
Sorry, that, I solved your problem.
Well, he did, but Virgil said we wouldn't move the passion up here.
Uh, Mr. Cunningham, is there an M2 zone in the industrial park?
I think there is. I think, I think there's an M2 zone in the industrial park. And remember, nobody on the present planning commission, or any of the past planning commissions, for that matter, has a lot to do with writing this resolution. There are several of you that were sitting, some of you that sat on the coordinating Proposition Level 01 committee, you guys signed that to pass it. And, you know, what, it appears right now that we're kind of going beyond it. But those, those zones were set up by, mostly by the state advisors and planning committees. And they were approved by the planning commission, and this commission passed the resolution. That's all I know. So it's not anything anybody's written in there, and it's not comprised anybody of it.
Where's the M2 in the industrial park?
I don't know. He asked me if I thought there was one, I said I thought there was one. I know there could be one in there, I don't know.
There is one M2 on that map, and that is where Rogers Group is right now.
And that is a mistake.
Mistake or not, it was voted on, but this body's passed.
True, but it was never designated an M2. It was grandfathered in, which means it was what, he was a rock crusher then, when the resolution was?
But I have M2, I mean, there are, there is an M2 there.
There is an M2.
And all we're asking for is to move it over a little bit on the property lines.
That's not, that's not my comment. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's, doesn't have to go back to the Proposition Level 01 committee.
Commissioner Alford?
I think we all, since we're doing all these conversations back and forth, one quarter, you represent the other, I think we all, I didn't have a problem.
And now, that's going to, I was, that's a quick answer to respond.
We're pulling back now, flop.
The reason we're calling back, Commissioner, is because the commission answered it. Okay. Well. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
If I could let our engineer figure out these questions, I think he'll be prepared for that.
Jim Patterson, with that John Engineering, and I just want to clarify a few statements that were just made. If you look at your current zoning map, the zoning map that this board has approved, the entire UGV of Manchester and Tallahassee is zone RS1. The industrial parks are not included in the UGV. There is no M2 zoning within those industrial parks. The only M2 zone on your current zoning map is the Rogers Group quarry. And whether or not that should have been, or was intended to have been, good as an M2 zone, made no difference when this body adopted that map. That is the official zoning map of Coffee County, and it does contain one M2 zone on that map, and that is the Rogers Group quarry. Thank you.
Okay. This, ma'am, is Fan.
First thing is, okay, last time at the caucus, we were presenting the FY2, uh, 2013 budget update. And I know they're going to try to budget even more, but as of right now, if we had to go with the budget here by not stoking according to this, there would need to be a twenty and one-fourth cent property tax increase for the citizens of this county. If we don't get some industry in our county, we cannot keep paying more property taxes, and nobody wants a little tax. So the property tax is in. The city might get in industry, but the county is not getting in very much industry. And with all of our interstate exits and everything. And I think that also, the workers' comp and property liability has gone up $217,000 a year that the county is going to have to pay. And what we can do, keep taxing the property owners, understand the property owners that live out there and not want to stay here, but then they don't pay property tax increases either, and I'm not voting for property tax increases. People don't have the money. So I don't know where we're going to get this money if we don't let industry come in here. Yes, it's right to supervise it, make sure it's right. Okay, when we sold the county rock quarry, and sold it at auction to Rogers Group, there was not one thing said to them about the reclamation of that old rock quarry when they finished with it. Us as a county sold it. And now it sits there, it's dangerous, it's not being used, and there's no reclamation on it. Nobody's made any effort in our county to see that Rogers Group cleans it up. Okay, they're grandfathered in. Who's going to clean up them when they sell, if they do and move? And we're worried about reclamation for the rights who have other places, and if you go there, there is neat and landscape with more house, and there are more houses in our county. So I think somewhere along the line, we're losing something.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
As previously, this motion, or this resolution, has such far-reaching consequences to the people of Coffee County. I mean, obviously, by a lot of the input we've heard tonight, those of you, the ten or eleven commissioners who attended the public hearing, there was a lot of good information and input. And this resolution, it has a lot of issues related to it, and there's a lot of issues being presented in this discussion and deliberation we've had. And this has some definitive far-reaching consequences and precedents for everybody in Coffee County, and all of Coffee County. And I just feel, by making the motion, which I will, to refer it to the planning commission, I think they need to look at these different issues that have been brought up on both sides, and look at these different issues, try to get the expert advice, legal advice, engineering advice, whatever, and get all the information they can to try to make the best recommendation they can to this commission. Because I think it's more important, we try to make the right decision, and not necessarily one way or another, but try to make the right decision in regard to a resolution that tries to identify a lot of these issues, recognize a lot of these issues, and doesn't bring further complication. And I think trying to clean up some of the planning and zoning document, you know, is a good thing, it needs to be done, and I, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay, what is your motion?
I'd like to refer this to the planning commission, to further study this and the issues related to it, bring back a recommendation to this commission, and I believe, Mr. Duckett mentioned maybe four months to look at the other resolution and this one also.
Okay.
And that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay.
Well, if this, if this passes and goes back, I hope that this four months doesn't turn into two years like the luck it has before, because it's a stall tactic when it does that. And it's not right, and it's not fair to people who are wanting to grow a business in our county.
Mr. Chairman, just mentioning that, you know, this is definitely not a stall tactic in any shape, form, or fashion. The thing is, this is an issue that's affecting both sides of this, it's all with the rights and their group and company, but it's those citizens, taxpayers out there in this community. I mean, they've had to endure this for numerous years. And I don't know, six, seven, whatever this has been going on, probably a lot of people are sort of tired of the situation, but it's so significant and important to all these different people impacted by it. So this, you know, is no way, it's all, you know, four months to try to make a decision that's going to affect many future generations in this county, you know, that is time well spent, and in no way, because the people in the community on the other side, not just a private entity trying to come in here and do this, but all these people being impacted in this community, you know, they're had to deal with this, and they don't want to keep having to deal with it neither. So, you know, that can go either direction, and this is intended to give time to get a, a good decision for the taxpayers of this county. And I think, you know, they deserve that, to be studied, and these issues addressed, and dealt with, and get good, solid information before a decision is made.
All right. Commissioner?
Ms. Brown, I know that you, in your wisdom, that you, when you're referring to taxpayers, I know that you understand also that Mr. Rod is a taxpayer of Coffee County, we certainly want to give that family the same privilege and obligation, you know, everything that we do, every taxpayer in Coffee County. So let's, let's always remember when we use the terminology taxpayers, any property owner in Coffee County is a taxpayer.
Ms. Fan, you.
I'm not undermining the four months. I want you to understand that. I'm not undermining that. But they've had this for two to two and a half years, and studied it, and studied it, and I would think in two and a half years, or two years, they should study no more.
Commissioner Fan, you had a question earlier, the four months, it's in the motion, so they have to bring it back in four months.
Well, no, that's fine, I don't have a problem.
But I mean, though, your, your question earlier was, you know, we're letting it go, but the motion is, the way it's stated, in four months, they have to bring it back to this commission.
I know, but what I'm saying to Bobby is, I'm not undermining the four months. That's not the problem. The problem is, they've had it for two years off and on, and I hope they were studying it all that time. So what happened? No offense, because I knew their folks, I, you know, I'm not undermining anything. It's just that after a while, enough is enough. How long do you study something? You only go accomplish four, five years.
Something, it has to go a little longer.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I appreciate Ms. Fan's comments, and really, to put it in perspective, the planning commission, they really hadn't been specifically studying this resolution, and necessarily, the issues that's been raised in the public hearing, and what's been raised on the floor here tonight. So this is getting them focused on this particular resolution and issues associated with it here. So it's not like, you know, their deliberations, what they've been doing over the past two years, it had been focused on this, so they had been, you know, spending two years studying this. Basically, they're dealing with things as, you know, it's wrong to be, and things to be corrected, things to be amended, and like I said, I think we need to, you know, have the time to do the right thing, to make the right decision.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that this is a resolution from 2006, statute 39, this is 2012. I count six years.
Okay, any other discussion?
What's there?
Will you withdraw your question there? Okay. Commissioner?
Well.
You got to be quick when you're dealing with Mr. Alford there.
Well, yeah, I understand. Not very quick, most of it. Takes me a while to think things through. I guess I have the same concern that Mrs. Fan has. This thing's been beat around, and I'm going to start back with the previous resolution that we had. There's no reason we couldn't have passed it as it was, and the planning commission could have taken the three months and set the new rate, to change it to what they needed to be. Instead, we, you know, messed around and let an opportunity to fix a problem go by. Again, Bobby may not think it's stalling, but that's all I've ever seen on this issue since I've been here, and I can't call it any other way. It's delaying tactics, and it's trying to get around dealing with the issues. I don't know what the reason is, that certainly affects business in this community because you can't get a fair shake, if you're going to be a businessman in this county, you ought to look some place else. Commissioner Mayor, would you entertain a little levity? I couldn't help but think when Commissioner Brian was saying we want to make sure, make the right decision, is that with an R, or a W?
Do we have any other discussion? Questions may call now. Okay. Oh, all right. Repeat your, Commissioner Brown, do you mind repeating your motion? Is that what you're talking about?
I think the motion needs to come from today.
Teresa, you have to read it.
I'll.
She's going to try to.
I have to run. We want to speak up.
Do you hear me, ma'am?
Turn back to the planning commission for four months, work out the issue.
To the planning resolution. Clarification on the motion. Four months from today are four additional months of inclusion of the other resolution. I think.
The two, yes, the four months, great.
Brian would include that into the motion so that it's clear, process what you're asking is, has its mission to do.
Okay. What do you want Commissioner Brown to do with the motion?
Well, Lisa has presented it, I just want clarification on, we've got it on, four months from today on this resolution. Is that what I understand the resolution body?
Four months from today will be found, Chairman.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Spatter, Commissioner Ripley. I just know, he's in there, he's not got to say anything, let it.
The only thing I was going to ask Bobby, because I've looked at the calendar, if, because four months is unclear, I would like to see these motions set, come back before the full commission at a commission date, which would be November, the November commission, which would be four months plus a few extra days. But that way, we at least know what agenda we'll get on.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. November, February, September, November commission meeting.
Who's second now? Who's second this motion? Do you okay with that?
I think Ms. Fan seconded it.
No. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so it's going to be the November meeting that gets brought back?
That's correct.
We don't have a meeting in October, okay.
If it's voted.
If it's, yes. Okay. Any other discussion? Let's go, please.
Commissioner Mayor, did you just give me your proposal?
Okay.
All right. Mark? Well, he got it from pocket. Now you got it locked up to it. Yeah, is that how you do it out the base to fix it, just pound it a little bit? All right. All right, let's have a count, please. Okay. All right.
I have a question for the attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Rodd.
Yeah.
The resolution 2006-39 was voted on by this body in the past. If that was done illegally, would that, uh, book be, would it be without its own in book right now in the laws?
That presupposes that it was done illegally. If it was done illegally, uh, there might be, have to be a process to determine that. But if it was done illegally, then I would say that it would, you would be under the law that was there before that totally. And where that would put us, I'm not sure because I'm not familiar with where it was before. Uh, and the question is what it would take to constitute illegally.
Well, according to the zoning laws and our laws, we have to have a public hearing for each one of these changes to the-
When there's, when there's amendment, there has to be, and I'm not sure, I wasn't here at that time, I don't know what they had. I understand that because when I looked into issue when you raised it originally, I went back and looked at when this ordinance passed, it looked like it was brought up in several commissioners' meetings and deferred, it looked like it's been, and I don't know if they could have had a public hearing in conjunction with those commissioners' meetings because I think it came up at a special meeting, uh, one time and then it deferred and then voted on another, so I, uh-
Rossen has the, uh, advertisement, the advertisements from the newspapers from that year and nothing was mentioned of this resolution.
I asked for October to November, I mean, August to November, so that was brought back if I could. And Clay is still searching in the, uh, planning office to see if there was anything. And I tried to get a bill, when we placed a bill and we don't have to-
So with, with that in mind, as they determined that the advertisement was not posted, would this have been a legal book?
You talking about when it was passed back then?
Yes.
I can't answer with that limited information. I'd have to look at the overall thing and then it might be a court issue.
Okay, let's get on to our next item. Ms. Van, ready to go back to work?
Letting state, Coffee County government sets up a new policy segment.
Okay, we can get a motion in a second, we'll get into discussion and Commissioner Rick is gonna speak to some of this. Can we get a motion in a second? Okay, do we have a second? Thank you. I was getting discussion. Commissioner Rick, would you please bring us up to speed?
Well-
Mr. Mayor, can we give everyone a minute to clarify so we- Yes. Oh, thank you. Okay, let's give everybody a chance here. Ladies, ladies. Yeah, we're gonna have to take, uh, Commissioner Rick, just take this matter and tell him he had voted to rescind, yeah, I want Commissioner, he needs to go to the-
Robin's heard this a bunch of ideas, so he's not, he hears anything.
All right, go ahead.
I don't think Robin would mind actually.
Hold, hold on just a second. Are you still recording, ma'am? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Rick.
Okay, uh, before you, you, is, is the substance abuse policy that's formatted out of the state's standard, uh, abuse policy for other counties. And this came up out, out of budget finance committee, which really was kind of an odd place for it to come out of, but it came out because our, our insurance risk folks came to explain the $225,000 increase in our workers' comp. And, and, which revealed that they had been trying to put good first management practices into our county and one was the adoption of this substance abuse policy, which surprised me that the county didn't already have a substance abuse policy. And, and the background of this, and we probably don't need to go into total detail, but it looks like it just got bounced around, uh, uh, I think with salary review and just could never get out of committee. So budget finance felt strongly enough that we needed to get this before this whole body and hopefully get it adopted because a county of our size with 230 something employees needs to have a substance abuse, uh, policy enacted. It certainly is for the safety of our employees, it's for the future cost reduction of our county, and it's just good business practices in today's environment.
Okay. Commissioner Duckett.
Yes, the Solidways and the, and the Road Commission already have a drug abuse policy and we would like to, to remain under the policy that we have right now because we're working with the state on that. And we would like for this not to cover those, those two areas because they're already covered and we don't need to be having two policies that they have to carry too. What we've brought is adequate and I would like to make a motion necessary that they be excluded from this because they're already covered.
Okay. The Department of Attorney wants to speak here just for a minute to make sure everything's clear. Before we get a second, just so that if this happens, all right, explain, Mr. Pettigale, what?
I, I have, I still have a question.
On, on, yeah, I'm talking about on this motion.
Okay. Oh, oh, what Mr. Duckett is, oh, what Mr. Duckett is, is wanting to do, this would be a motion to amend and you would say something to the effect that you want to amend this motion, adding that those two departments be excluded from this policy. That's what I'm wanting to do.
Okay, that is a motion and we do have a second.
I want, I want the ambulance personnel, uh, is also, also-
Well, can we just back up, Mike?
So, so how, how many departments are you, is that, how many, how, hold on just a second. Mariana's got something to say.
Rennie, uh, the rules of ways are under T-DOT because they have CDLs.
Okay.
So it's a highway, not the ambulance. They have, they don't have CDLs, so that's-
You do not have a drug officer?
No, we do not. We have a short statement in our personnel manual right now, but we're not following the guidelines of the Tennessee drug-free workplace.
What she's saying, Commissioner, is that, uh, Rennie is under T-DOT and who's the other?
Highway.
And the highway's under T-DOT, but you're not. Okay.
Is that only for Rennie's drivers?
That's what the difference is.
Uh, Commissioner Vale?
Yes, now, that'd be just my employees with holding CDLs, that's got the CDLs. Now, my community center attendants and anybody else without the CDLs, I would want them to come under this.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Kelly, what was you saying?
Rennie just asked, I do have another question though concerning this as we're looking at amendments and things too. I guess I, I, my question is, I didn't see anything in here that would require drug testing for, uh, injuries and accidents. So it's only on a random basis as opposed to, uh, there are some, I see some provisions for some purpose and cause, but it's on the person's behavior and those things as opposed to, you mentioned the Tennessee drug-free workplace. Uh, one of their initiatives has been to have drug testing for anyone involved in a worker's, uh, comp or worker in injury accident or in a vehicle kind of accident regardless. Uh, so I'd like to-
That should be in there.
See if that's covered.
Is it in here?
Post-accident testing should be in there. And if it's not-
Okay, I missed it if it's there.
I don't know whether it's, I, I want it there.
Okay, we need to take a minute, uh, Mariana's gonna look. And, and Mark, if you will too, if you'll look too.
I think it's on the top of page-
What now? Do we find it?
I think it's reported in the top of, on page seven, number two.
Okay, let Commissioner Kelly look at it, let Mariana look at it, and the attorney look at it.
Okay, Russ, that is for a, a, a lost worktime injury as opposed to E1 injuries, which is normally covered under the drug-free workplace.
Well, it says, an employee, an employer may send employees have, maybe will-
Commissioner, can you hold your mic so we can hear you?
It says, uh, the county may send employees for substance abuse tests if they are involved in on-the-job accident where personal injury or damage to county property occurs. Uh, and again, I, I guess that's the, my concern there, maybe the term may, certainly persons will send employees. I don't know how to tighten, tighten that up.
Well, uh, can we do that with the, uh, if, if we make the motion and add that will and all that change, will that work? Once we get a motion-
First thing you, you've got to clear up, Mr. Duckett's amendment.
Yeah, let's do it.
I got it for that and I don't know if we've ever defined who all is excluded.
Now I'll ask Mr. Duckett, if I can, because I, I think what Rennie's saying, and I don't wanna get this thing so delusional, there, I can understand if a county employee already has a CDL license, uh, that they would not need to necessarily come under here, but I'm not certain that it, it should be a real bother to be under here anyway there. But, but I think if, I think we're gonna be dangerous by excluding departments there. We wanna say county employees without CDL licenses. I, I'll, I'll be comfortable with that, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable going beyond that.
Well, we don't have, we, we don't have a motion, I mean, a motion on amendment.
We don't have a second.
Yeah, we don't have a second. So we can back it out and let the commissioner. All right. Yes.
I'll make my amendment.
You gonna make a motion?
I'm going to amend, uh, to include all employees that are covered by CDL, who are, those, those will be under a drug plan.
Everybody that does not have CDLs.
Right.
So really, your amendment is excluding-
CDLs.
Uh, people with home CDLs.
Right, they're, they're already covered under a plan and if we, if we move them under another, it's gonna be double jeopardy.
Okay, listen, so you're making a motion to exclude employees with CDLs.
Right.
Okay, that is the motion. Now can we get a second? Thank you. How about discussion? Okay, we're just voting on the amendment right now. Okay, just, uh, who said, okay, Marv. Okay, are we getting ready to vote, Ken? Are we ready? Okay, let's vote on the amendment. All right, let's have a count, please. Seventeen years. Now, let's get back to the substance abuse policy. We got a motion in a second, all right, so we need to back into discussion. All right, we're back to discussion.
The question for the ratings that change, will may to shall? It, it could be, but I, I think may, I think it gives you option to look at the circumstance. You could have an injury that whereby there was no reason to test somebody and if you put a shell in there and then don't do it, then somebody else get tested and they'll be saying, well, you didn't do it on that one. So I'd feel more comfortable with the may because it allows some discretion without just putting an absolute that might be-
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I don't believe that's, I don't, I don't believe that, I think it should be will. I mean, it definitely don't need to be may because that, that leaves too much open-ended stuff.
Okay, the, the attorney was, did you try to punish that?
Well, I, I, you know, it's your vote on the thing, it's your call if it's will, but I think there's certain, say we had an explosion that was, and an employee got hurt and you go make him take a drug test, you know, you might not wanna do it in some circumstance. If you got a shell, then you gotta do it. And you can- Well, if you change the may to will, it says important, will send the employees for substance abuse test if they're involved in on-the-job accidents, you know, that's, they have no competition to that.
Bob, I, I think that's important that, that regardless of the cause, accidents, you know, we're trying to change a whole culture and lifestyle and we're trying to drive down workers' comp and get it under control.
Okay.
And that's a standard in business, I mean, they, it's a will.
Of course, this language is smitten by the workers' company. I understand you.
Okay, to do this though, we're gonna have to get a motion to, uh, to amend this.
I make a motion to-
Amend the word?
amend the word to will.
From what, though? From what to will?
May, from may to will.
Okay, we just think that in there. And you say it. Any, okay, does everybody understand what we're voting on the amendment? Question been called, let's vote. Are you, Ken, you all right? Do we, we didn't get ahead of you? All right, we had everybody locked in? All right, let's have the count, please. Nineteen years. All right, so now we're actually voting on the substance abuse policy. We got a motion in a second. Yeah, we'll up the back of the discussion, but that's where we're at again. We're back on the substance abuse policy, the policy itself now. Questions been called, let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. All right. Next item.
Next item, budget amendment.
All right. You gonna read them all, Mariana?
Well, the first two are for the school board.
Okay.
One's the general purpose school fund and the cafeteria fund. Neither require any, any money, it's only the unsold fund balance, so unless anybody has any questions, well, it was approved by budget and finance. I, for reconsider.
Okay, we're gonna vote on both amendments.
For the schools.
Yeah, for the schools. Can we get a motion here? Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And like you said, it has been passed by budget finance. Okay, it's not, let's vote, please. Mr. Mayor. All right, let's have a count, please. Oh wait, we still have to Mr. Duckett. Oh, he had a lead? Oh, okay. Well, Commissioner Duckett had the lead, Ken, so how, how we gonna, can you come back? Okay, so now we can get the, hang on just a minute here, let's see. Okay, now do they have to vote again? Go ahead and vote again. Just let, take Commissioner Duckett off. Let's see, have we got everybody locked in, okay, let's have a count, please. Eighteen years, okay. All right, Mariana?
I have, I have three to read. First one is 116, 2012-10, increase in litter program, seventeen hundred dollars, increase in sanitation management of the charges, seventeen hundred dollars, no change in the fund balance. Second one is 101, 2012-11, increase of the library committed fund, twelve thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars, increase, this is the Manchester Community Account, nineteen thousand five hundred fifty-eight, increase priority of tax collections, twenty thousand five eight three, increase hanging limit taxes, seven thousand six hundred, increase bank exercise fees, thirty-four thousand through twenty-six, increase data entry fees for the court, twenty-eight thousand, increase trust fee access fees, twenty-five thousand, increase one thousand dollars agriculture grant, increase communications strength grant, four thousand seven seventy-five, increase homeland security grant, thirty thousand two hundred thirty dollars, other federal through state, this is a voting grant for voting machines, ten thousand five hundred dollars, increase insurance recovery, nine thousand five hundred. The increase line items expenditures, circuit court journey fees, four thousand dollars, other charges, twenty-eight thousand, Sheriff's Department increased gasoline, forty thousand dollars, agriculture extension, farmers' grant, one thousand, veterans assistance increase, nine hundred ten dollars and sixty-nine dollars for social security, general government, five-ten trustees commission, increase twenty-five thousand dollars, general government increased conference center expense, nineteen thousand four hundred thirty dollars, lechon commission, voting machine purchase, ten thousand five hundred dollars. Civil defense, communications grant, increase to four thousand seven seventy-five, homeland security grant, thirty thousand two hundred thirty dollars, telehome library, committed account, increase librarian, one thousand three seventy-seven, social security, one of two, state retirement, fifty-one, hundred and five dollars, maintenance agreements, seven thousand seventy-six, library book, six hundred twenty-two dollars, other supplies and materials, two thousand, office equipment, one thousand five hundred twenty-eight, Manchester Library Committee Account, increase maintenance agreements, twenty thou, excuse me, two thousand fifty-eight dollars, other contracted services, two thousand five hundred, audio vehicles, two thousand five hundred, library books, three thousand two hundred, other supplies materials, one thousand three hundred, and office equipment, eight thousand. The jail, increase water and sewer costs, seven thousand sixty-one dollars, there's no increase to or decrease in the fund balance. Last one's the highway department, it's 131, 2012-12, decrease in expenditures, highway and bridge maintenance, crushstone, fifty thousand dollars, decrease capital outlay, highway equipment, forty-three thousand seven ninety-six, increase expenditures, roller vehicles, thirty-eight thousand three eighty-one, increase investment income, four hundred dollars, increase sell, I forget what, materials, two thousand nine hundred. Decrease in mineral severance tax, forty thousand dollars, and decrease, increase in undersigned fund balance of ninety-five thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Fund balance this fiscal year, three hundred thirteen, eight hundred thirty-four dollars.
Point of information, point of information, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mariana, could you state just for the record as far as, so the public can know what the fund balance was before the amendments, the inappropriate fund balance prior to the.
Which ones, in which fund?
What, well, where you start from the beginning, what it was before you started in the amendments?
For all these funds? Three, okay. 116 rules dollar waste, beginning nine hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars, there was no change. General fund, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred sixteen, there was no change. Highway department, fund 131, beginning two hundred eighteen thousand, three fifty-seven, ending three hundred thirteen thousand, eight thirty-four.
And these did go through Budget and Finance?
Yes, and were approved on June the fourth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept these. All right, do we have a second? Thank you, any discussion?
I've got a question, Senator.
Okay.
When I look at the library, a couple of items for it, we started off with what, about nine hundred thousand dollars in the library budget?
Okay, this is their committed account, it's not their operating account, this is money, yes, derived, okay, eight hundred ninety-nine, nine hundred dollars.
Okay, but that did include these funds also, did it not, in that total?
No.
That was just their operating account?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have the count. Okay, who made the motion to accept the amendments? Mr. West, who seconded? Ms. Fane? Okay. All right, we good, ready to go to the next item?
Hey, FY 2013 budget update.
Commissioner Ripken, you're on board.
All right, everyone in your pack that had a quarter-inch handout, that is the current proposed 2012-13 budget, and all the departments have presented their budgets, pretty much their budgets as presented are included in this, so there's not been any real hammering, we use that term, refinement, whatever you might want to say, in any department's budget at this point, and so if, if these budgets were to hold up, you can see we're facing a twenty-cent tax increase, which is about a nine percent increase over last year's. We certainly hope, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be able to bring this down, whether we can bring it down a lot is going to be part of the debate. So we wanted to get this budget in front of y'all, to get y'all's feedback, with y'all's seat, for any departments, for expenditure reduction, revenue increases, so please let anybody on Budget Finance, let the mayor's office, let Mariana's office, know if you would like for us on Budget Finance to particularly focus in on any particular area. It, I think the sentiment for everyone would be no tax increase there. The seven cents for the jail, and this has been, that was put in out of the property tax increase a year before, I guess, has been one of those discussed items, and we have used that money, it's been some money shuffled around, now with the commitment to the jail, we have to pull that money out of the general fund dollars and dedicate it to the debt of retirement dollars, so that seven cents is, I'm going to say, servicing up again, and so it's, there's real hurdles that we're facing in order to get this budget down, and this is just a summary, I mean, we talked about the debt, the seven cents for the jail, we've got the seventy-five thousand dollar Lakewood issue, certainly this, this workers' comp increase of two hundred seventeen thousand dollars was certainly not expected, and certainly very disturbing at the, to the county, and, and, and the schools certainly have put together an operating no increase budget from, from the property tax standpoint, but they have been unable to overcome the funding needs for, for three new buses and the fuel costs. That might be tweaked a little bit, if anybody can turn and guesstimate what fuel might hold for the next twelve months, we're getting a little bit of break in the last few weeks, but is that going to hold, who knows? So anyway, that's what we're facing, it's not, it's not a pretty picture, I wish I had some real optimistic forecast here.
Any questions? Well, if not, let's go to the next item. Ms. Fane, not Commissioner Fane.
Resolution 2012-17, resolution supporting extended service years for school buses.
Okay, you heard the resolution, we need a motion and a second here.
No.
All right, we got a motion, do we have a second? Just a second, okay, let's get into discussion here.
This is the, from the state mandating that the buses have a limited use of seventeen years, two hundred thousand miles, same time, the, that was based on a safety issue, on data that are not proven, the resolution is to ask the legislature to extend the life of the buses to twenty years, three hundred thousand miles for diesel and five hundred thousand miles for propane. Senator, excuse me, Representative McFinn is part of this and will support it, he would like more resolutions of this nature from the school boards, from other commissions, but this is a starting point. The legislature on one hand says, how the citizens say, no more taxes, and yet something is mandated, has a price tag on it, and it is totally unnecessary, surrounding states do not have this requirement, so recommend that we pursue this, and encourage other counties to do the same, those are affected by school buses.
Mr. Marsh?
And I'd like to ask that this commission talk to other counties, or email other county mayors, and get other county commissions on board with us, because it is a cost, we maintain our buses to high standards, they're inspected every year, they pass inspections, I'm having to pull buses offline with a hundred ninety-nine thousand miles on them that still have a hundred thousand miles left in them. There are counties in the state of Tennessee that I spoke to this week that drive on dirt roads, and they are not capable of making that two hundred thousand miles, I understand that, but it seems like that counties like coffee with good roads, we're being punished, put in the same boat that everybody else is, that we're having to buy buses just because the state of Tennessee mandates us to do it by age or by mileage, and I feel like that twenty years or three hundred thousand miles would give us a good, good return on our investment on the buses.
Commissioner, what is the life of a diesel engine, on the average?
The Cummins that come in usually goes about four hundred thousand miles before you do an overhaul.
And we have to get, we have to stop at two hundred, is that right?
Well, the law in the state of Tennessee is, is you can put as many miles on the bus as you want to, up until the age of fifteen, and there are buses in the state of Tennessee that have a half a million miles on them at fourteen years old.
What about ours, though?
Our buses are at fifteen years and they have a hundred ninety thousand miles on them, and I'm carrying some of them over, but I, we lost one at the end of April this year, it had a hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-six miles on it, and I wasn't willing to drive it any further than that because it would put us in.
Over the limit?
Yeah, if we went over, it was an accident, so that bus is sitting on the lot, and it's a surplus bus, but it, by state law, it's sixteen and a half years old, but it had reached the two hundred thousand mile limit, and you're caught.
Prior to that, was there a limit?
Prior to that, you had to get rid of them at fifteen years.
Was there a mileage limit?
No, and there's still no mileage limit up until the fifteen years.
Yes.
But after you carry them over the fifteen-year, the extended life policy that they have adopted, which is a good thing, but they all won't make it that way, you pay seven hundred fifty dollars to have the bus double inspected, they're inspected twice now, we paid the state of Tennessee, the highway patrol, seven hundred fifty dollars for them to look at the bus, and he comes, he's in and out today, and they're double inspected, they're very rigorous, and I just think that this would be a good thing, it would save a lot of counties a lot of money.
What did you say about, was it Kentucky you was talking about the other day about the mileage?
The state of South Carolina, they can drive them until they don't pass inspection.
Okay.
There's no age limit to it, and the pool of used buses has really dried up. State Alabama used to subsidize their bus service up until the age of ten years, so there was a huge market of used buses coming online, eleven years up, and state Alabama chose not to do that anymore, so they're in worse shape than we are, they don't have a funding mechanism for their buses, and there's no more used buses coming on to the market, and if they are, they're very expensive, it's not worth paying seventy-five thousand dollars for a bus with a hundred thousand miles on it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, do we have a copy of this resolution, or is it not available?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion? One question, big call, let's vote, please. Okay, we're voting. We did. Ms. Fisby, could you go, please? And Mr. Ryan, let me get that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I mean to vote yes, so I'm not sure.
Well, Mr. Fane?
Says, but I won't, I won't yes on it.
All the commissioners need to sign this. Yes. Can we, can we change? Okay, all right, so if, when the vote goes up, if Commissioner offered, yes, no, it is a yes. Is that right, Commissioner? It is a yes. All right, let's see, we got everybody locked in, let's have a count. Commissioner, I'm making it good. All right, next item on the business, before we do that, I want to make sure everybody signs this before we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, what about HWR meeting?
I'm sorry?
What about the HWR meeting?
Oh, okay, we had, we spoke to Dr. Matt, it has to be Monday at five o'clock.
I thought we were going to discuss, just a very discussion after this meeting.
No, we can't because of the time, we had to call, and I apologize, we got to call you back, but anyways, Monday.
What'd you say?
Yeah, and she, did you send her another Gmail? Well, hey, Commissioner West, you do have a note that she sent you another on your email.
I haven't been home all night.
Okay. All right, Sheriff, how close you getting everybody, have you got this side signed yet? Okay, so we're going to wait there about the next item then. Mr. Castile, would you like to come up and fill in while we're on?
Yes, I think I can fill in. Mr. Mayor, staff, members of the county commission, I just wanted to thank you for the ability to have been able to work together with you, I will no longer address you as the Director of Schools, this will be my last time to do that, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate the support that you've shown our school system, and the abilities that we have in that way, and being able to work together, I want to thank you for the projects and the programs that you've supported through the years, and just wanted to have to say that, have that opportunity to give you the credit for a lot of things. I appreciate your concern that you've shown in education, and I know that we haven't always agreed, but that's part of. but that's part of the normal procedure of politics and progress. And that's what we call progress, and that's what it will always be preferred as. So I've learned to accept the things that I can't change and to take advantage of those things that I could. I hope that, uh, you will show the new director, uh, the same respect and the integrity that you've given me. Dr. McCall is here tonight in the audience, and I appreciate her professionalism and the ability that she has had to come and work through this transition. And I can definitely assure you that, uh, she is concerned about Coffee County students and knows, that would be very dear to her heart. I know that, uh, many times you, you do a thankless job. I know that, uh, there's very few times that you, uh, you get a pat on the back. But I respect what you do, and I appreciate you answering the call. And I simply have to give God the credit for the successes that we've had and appreciate being able to serve him, and I'm, I'm sure you feel the same way. But thank you again for the opportunities that you've given me in our school systems, and God bless you all.
Mr. Castile, would you like to introduce her and bring her up to the podium and let us have a word with her?
This is Dr. McCall, she is from Jefferson County, and she will be your new director of Coffee County Schools.
Would you like to come to the podium and say a word to her?
Not sure that I would, but I would have to.
I bet you're not shy.
I'm not shy. Thank you, first of all, to Mr. Castile for that very warm welcome and for, um, introducing me to you. And it's been a pleasure to, to hear your issues, um, coming from East Tennessee. They are not so different, you will be happy to know. Um, it's not anything extraordinary that we're all in a crisis situation when it comes to funding. So, um, I want to say to, to the board and to Mr. Castile and to the community that I'm very excited to be here, looking forward to moving the school system forward and working together, um, to, to build schools and get us where we need to be with technology and student achievement. So, happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, can you tell her he had blonde hair when he became director? I don't know, can you tell her that, Kenny?
No, but his black hair.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're down to statements, Senator, has any commissioner, any commissioner?
None.
An out, all right, and how about the public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Frances Arthur, I'm the director of the Coffee County 912 project. And, um, I've been doing a little research this week I thought that you all might be interested in learning about. This comes from the Connected Tennessee, uh, statement that was issued initially in 2007, and they did another report into, as recently as 2010. This concerns internet access in Tennessee, and I've looked up the statement from Coffee County to find out exactly where we stand on internet service and communication and, and access for the public to find out about what is going on in our government and local government issues. According to this report, in nineteen, or I'm sorry, in 2007, seventy-one percent of Coffee County citizens had a computer at home. That number increased to seventy-four percent in their 2010 report. Sixty-one percent had access to the internet in 2007. That number obviously has increased by 2010. And the 2010 report, it said that eighty-two percent of people communicated with family and friends via the internet. Between 2007 and 2010, the number jumped from thirteen percent to forty percent of people who communicated with members of the Tennessee General Assembly on matters of government issues. Concerning local government issues, that number is only nine to twenty-one percent. That number intrigues me. Why is it that we cannot contact you via the internet? Why is it we choose not to? Does that perplex you? It perplexes me. And yet, on this 2010 report, it says that fifty percent of users search for information about government services and policies via the internet. I'll keep going. Quote, "All entities within the government sector understand that technology is important to conduct the government business more, more effectively. With the cost of gasoline increasing and the demand of citizens for more convenience and cost savings, it is expected that more uses of online interactive service, interactive services will increase." This is from the 2007 report. They scored you a three out of a zero to five scale on applications and services in this 2007 report. And it says some e-government applications are available, such as simple building permit applications, email lists servers, and some downloadable forms. What is not available via your county website is access to agendas to this meeting and minutes to this meeting. The people that left this room in a flood thirty minutes ago will have no idea what happened in this meeting via your website. And that is sad, because they should be able to have access to that. And those minutes are not currently posted, and the agenda to the next meeting is usually not posted.
Uh, we have somebody to address that. Uh, we have an IT.
Okay, when we call the IT person, they tell us that they don't have permission to publish.
Okay, let's, let's see what he says.
We've been, uh, posting the YouTube videos now of this meeting for, I believe, since January.
And some of them have been taken down.
No.
Because we can't find them.
Well, uh, uh, can you help her find them after this meeting? Can you show her? Let her show, let him show you then. Okay, well, I--
But I, I agree, I'm not sure this day of technology, not get our minutes or agenda posted timely. I mean, that's just posting a word file quickly to a space on our website. That should be a pretty quick thing to do.
What's the time that you usually after the meeting, how long does it take you before you gotta go?
I'm generally within twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Ricken? Did you hear what the man said? Tell him again, he didn't hear you.
Rush, I'm generally have the movie up on YouTube between twenty-four and forty-eight hours.
I don't understand that, but I'm still saying that getting our agenda posted out there and getting the minutes should be also, well, written document, not just someone, shouldn't be a big deal.
Okay, Commissioner West?
Mr. Chairman, there's also, what we haven't done, all the pictures under, uh, Mr. Norton's name and Mr. Hogan's telephone number. Now--
Why is it that?
Well, we should have done a blog dump two years ago.
Who, but it's not Kenny, does it? But now he has to send it. So it's tricky what we deal with. Okay, we gotta address that.
Just from the time I've been here, oh, I, I get meeting announcements, but I don't get agendas for any committee I sit on. We get meeting announcements. Sure would like to have an agenda and know all we're gonna talk about.
Okay, we--
Do those, I mean, it goes to what Rush said, we oughta have a place we can get that information on everything. But what happened, and then the minutes of whatever the meeting was, so people can find it. And I don't know how long you leave them up there, they, they get stale after about three months or something, but but they oughta be available, and I know Roxanne keeps them forever, because if I need something, she's found anything I want.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr.--
Thank you. All right, I, I, I'll, oh, okay. Get on up here.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I have to back her up.
Okay.
Putting videos out in YouTube land doesn't put them on the government website.
Yeah.
They're not on the government website, I'll go read you back and check.
Yeah, we're gonna work on that.
They're, they're out in YouTube land, who goes to look for it? County gov guy on YouTube.
Okay.
Um, the, the agenda was put on Thursday. The calendar for this meeting was put in on Thursday. There's a spot to click for public hearing, and it shows nothing for tonight.
Okay, we're gonna have to work on some of that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, stand up. Mr. West?